I'd like to call our regular district two twenty eight school board meeting to order. Can I get roll call please?
Miss Glisson here, Miss Bliss, Miss Lot here. Shh.
Thank you.
Miss Lot here, Miss Motley.
Here.
Miss Sterns. Mr. Whitcomb.
Here.
Mrs. Bressler.
Here, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we're moving on to our agenda item two, our board's minute approval. Can I get a motion to approve the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four regular and closed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Miss Motley, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. Glisson, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Stern, uh, Mrs. Bressler.
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the December tenth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Miss Motley, second by Mr. Whitcomb, any discussion? Roll call please.
Miss Motley, aye. Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. Glisson, aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Bressler.
Aye. Moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bressler, just want to thank the students, staff, administration for a strong semester. It's a lot of work that you pour into the school year and it's believable to see that semester's already gone by, so just want to publicly thank everyone for the hard work that goes into, to the daily activities of the school district. We've had a strong semester, wish everyone a happy holiday season as we head into the new year, and for the students that are here today, I know you've got one more day of cramming here before the end of the semester exams that start on Thursday and Friday, wish everyone good luck, and if you're traveling for the holidays, please be safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you, moving on to our principal reports.
Good evening, everyone. We have a few highlights, presentations that we're going to make first, it's going to be our three seeds program, Jason Thomas.
How y'all doing today? Y'all doing good? Ain't no mic?
No.
Jason Thomas Three Seeds Ministry Group, I've been at Hillcrest for about nine years now, and we did our eighth annual spelling competition called Bs for Js, and the winner of the spelling competition gets two hundred dollars and we go get them some shoes. The person who won this year was Michaela Rupert, and she just bought some New Balances. I wouldn't wear them, but she liked. And it's a lot of pressure getting it in front of people, so if y'all don't want to, you can, but I want to invite a member of the board to spell one word for twenty dollars if y'all want to, anybody want to do it? If you don't want to, it's okay. But now you got to feel like the students, they do the same thing. So when it comes, I was really going to get ready too, but when it comes to that, we have our students stand up, you know, spell the word and do it, because innovative. The second thing that we have is I was recently awarded twenty thousand dollars from Micore Gas as their nonprofit of the year, so with that money, we plan to finish building studios and we're buying a bus so we can do more programming for students, so of all the work that we've been doing here, they recognize it, they saw it, they're really making an impact, and then we're gonna do more interviews with students, where Deja, Deja? Where Deja? There you go, Deja, so Deja is my program in Davia, what Davia? So both of them are going to be interviewed, talking about this, how it feels to actually win things, to get more student voices out there, because we can talk all day, but hearing in front of them, it feels a little different. So those are my highlights, thank you guys for y'all's support, I appreciate y'all, and I'm gonna keep my twenty dollars.
Our next presentation is going to be Dr. Younger, Athletic Director, to talk about flag football.
Hello, everyone, and welcome, so this evening is my pleasure to honor our girls, our historical girls' flag football team. And I use the term historical, there's a presentation I'm going to show you in a minute, and I'm going to stay under my five-minute time limit, but, but they are very, very significant and will be significant in Hillcrest history, so this is our first flag football team, but more than that, this team went on to win the regional championship, the state regional championship. Out of a hundred and thirty teams, they made it all the way to the Sweet Sixteen in the state of Illinois, and they came together very well, so I'm going to show a quick presentation, but I wanted you to see who the Hillcrest athletes are and the flag football team.
Thank you.
It's my honor to share with you the incredible journey of our flag football team this season, a journey defined by hard work, dedication, a spirit of excellence, and a series of remarkable victories. This season was a testament to the resilience and commitment of our athletes, coaches, and support staff. These ladies push their limits every single day, through late practices, being viewed as secondary to boys' football. A tough start to the season, and ever-changing practice locations, our girls persevered and stayed the course. Our team faced tough competition along the way, but it was in those challenging moments that their true character shined, the camaraderie, the resilience, and the never-give-up attitude all came together to make the season unforgettable. There was one crucial game that defined our journey. During homecoming week, our Hawks faced off against Rich Township in a thrilling home game that drew the largest crowd of the season. The atmosphere was electric, and the game lived up to the hype with an incredible display of action. There were long runs, deep passes, daring trick plays, and clutch interceptions. By halftime, the score was tied at twenty-four to twenty-four, and it felt as if whoever had the ball next was destined to score. With just seven minutes left in the game, the score stood at forty-four to forty-four, and Rich Township pushed deep into Hillcrest territory. In a jaw-dropping moment, Hillcrest intercepted the ball, giving them one final chance to secure the victory. With only one minute on the clock, the tension was palpable. As the time ran down with just five seconds remaining on the clock, the Hawks lined up for one last play, in a dramatic heart-stopping sequence, key blocks cleared the way for the quarterback to sprint seventy yards and score the winning touchdown. The crowd erupted in cheers, the final score was Hillcrest fifty, Rich Township forty-four. This game will live on in the memories of our athletes and all who were there. Our coaches have been pivotal in this journey, they've worked tirelessly to instill confidence, develop skills, and foster a culture of excellence, but beyond wins and championships, they've taught our athletes lessons in teamwork, sportsmanship, leadership, and perseverance, qualities that will serve them well beyond the field. Their journey has been spectacular, Hillcrest won the regional championship, the Hawks again beat Rich Township, our athletes have learned the value of teamwork, sportsmanship, and leadership skills that extend far beyond the football field. This season was about so much more than football, it was about the bonds of friendship, the joy of overcoming obstacles, and the pride of achieving something great together. As we celebrate their regional championship and their inspiring journey, let us also recognize the profound impact flag football is having on girls around the world, our athletes, and our school community. Thank you for your continued support of our student athletes and their dreams. This season was just the beginning, go Hawks! I want to also thank the Jim Boswell, because we had an AI presentation about a month ago, and that video was actually made using in-video AI, so that's my AI voice, I really, really do use AI. But thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to our Keepers of the Light presentations, so first up is going to be Mrs. Tiffany Mulcahy, come on. Miss Mulcahy is in the social studies department for us, she also is a bowling coach and has coached some other things for us in the past, she was nominated by two fellow staff members, so I'm just going to read what they had to say about you. Miss Mulcahy does an amazing job being active in the school atmosphere, creating connections with students, changing students' lives, and embodies the qualities of an outstanding teacher. Miss Mulcahy is an amazing member of the Hawks staff and creates an amazing atmosphere within the school and outside as well. And the other staff member said, "I know that Mrs. Mulcahy pours her heart into her lessons and tries to make them engaging as possible, I hear the excitement through the door each day," so you probably guess who it is. "She also has students in a room during her off period, these students don't have an eighth period, and she helps them with any coursework they might have during her off period, I have known Mrs. Mulcahy for about six years, and she spends so much time preparing for her students, she is one of those teachers that cares for each and every one of them and truly deserves this award." Congratulations. And then I'm going to call, we'll call Mrs. Gomez up here from the athletic department to present.
Oh, so I nominated a student, a freshman this year, his name is Alex Bugaro, can you come up, Alex? I have just a little bit to say about you, okay? Alex, you consistently demonstrate your willingness to help anyone in any way possible. You have done an outstanding job during your first semester as a freshman at Hillcrest High School. Your classroom performance and your strong worth ethic do not go unnoticed. Your dedication is evident, from participating in sports to volunteering your free time throughout the football season. Your positive energy and dedication inspire those around you every single day. With such qualities, I know you have a very bright future ahead. It is my honor to present you with the Keeper of the Light Award. Congratulations.
Okay. Forrest, okay, Forrest is next. Thank you, congratulations.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to award the Keeper of the Light awards from Oak Forest High School, but I need to start first with a little bit of show and tell, so I'm just going to pass out a couple of these additions around. And I am going to ask if Justin Gibbs, the Oak Forest High School senior, would come up for the presentation. Okay, everyone, this, of course, is Justin Gibbs, he's senior of Forest High School, and he is our Keeper of the Light for the first semester of this school year. Justin was actually nominated by one of our guidance counselors, Eric Boyer, and he, short and sweet, wrote this little message, which is that Justin is a great student and an even better young man, he is a great example of someone who always does things the Bengal way. So I will explain a little bit more about the newspaper articles, the Bengal Beat. We started a new program at Oak Forest High School where our athletic office has this really nice publication that we get for free, it's based on advertisements that people volunteer and put into there, and Justin, we actually share him with Bremen High School, he goes over and takes the TV production class, and as part of his interest in the TV production class, he's really become quite an amazing photographer. And those of you who are photographers understand that, it's really difficult to take pictures of athletic events, but Justin shows up at every athletic event taking different pictures, so he has been a great contributor to our Bengal Beat, in addition to the fact that then he also works with our athletic office doing volunteer time in there, and Mr. Mansky actually wrote some really nice words for him as well. Justin Gibbs, or Gibby, as he's called, is a standout member of our school community. Athletically, Justin shines on both the baseball and golf teams, but beyond the field, he contributes his talents to our athletic office during his off periods, where he creates stunning graphic designs to promote student athletes across social media and our school TV displays. Gibby's creative impact doesn't stop there, this fall, he put his skills behind the camera, capturing photos for the Bengal Beat newspaper. You'll notice actually on one of the editions, that's actually Justin on the front page, so not a picture that he took of himself, that was pretty talented, but the rest, many of the rest of the pictures in there are from Justin. In the classroom and on the field and in everything he does, Justin leads by example, he's motivated, competitive, passionate, and strives for excellence in all areas. Most importantly, Justin's an exceptional person, I truly enjoy getting the opportunity to interact with him on a daily basis, and he makes everyone around him better. So thank you Gibby for making our school stronger and better, and congratulations, and here is your Keeper of the Light Award. Okay, and it just ironically just so happened that I have someone else to recognize who also does quite a bit for our social media presence, and so if Karen Primm could please come up for? Staff member for our Keeper of the Light, so some nice words on Karen's nomination, she actually was nominated by Christine Huey, because Karen not only works in our instructional materials center, but she also does a lot of time with our athletic office, doing a lot of different events, working events in the evening, and she is our PR person within the building, so Christine Huey writes, Karen is an all-star bembel, bembel. The bumble, the, on my brain tonight, too close to Christmas. So Karen is an all-star begle and always goes above and beyond for Oak Forest High School, whether it's working athletic events or attending a school play, Karen's role in the IMC allows her to help all of our students as well as our staff when it comes to technology assistance, reserve space to enhance the learning experience for extracurricular meetings, constantly organizing, creating materials, and most especially, Friday doughnuts. In her new role as publicity director, Karen has really amped up Oak Forest's social media, she gets to events whenever she can with her iced tea in hand, and always make sure that someone will take pictures so that she can post about all the fun, creative, and awesome things our students and staff are doing on a daily basis. Our students and staff know that they can always ask for her help, and she always does it with a smile, Bengal Nation is incredibly lucky to have Karen, and Dr. Boniface just also commented that Karen has really done so much to amp up and is our social media presence, and is really the base behind our experience OFHS, so if you're following our page, you'll see that there's just always things that she's highlighting there, so congratulations Karen, Keeper of the Light for the whole. Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have Tinley Park High School, and have a wonderful holiday. I'm sorry, I don't have newspapers to hand out. On behalf of Tinley Park High School, I'd like to introduce you to two outstanding titans, one of which couldn't be here tonight, but I certainly want to make sure that he gets the props that he deserves. I love how this submission came about, because it was, the nominator was Tom Kearney, one of our science teachers, and this is what he writes, the winner is, or the Keeper of the Light for Tinley, as far as our staff member goes, is Chris Lopez, our head, our chief maintenance, chief of maintenance, and his submission says, well, we were all in the audience, and I know that it's gotten a lot of publicity over time, that one of our teachers, Lauren Brazel, won the Kleenex Hero of the Classroom Award, and they created a beautiful video, and we were all in the audience watching this video, and so Tom is in the audience watching the video, and he writes, there were students in there, he says, "A student looked over my shoulder while I was watching the Lauren Brazel video and made this comment, wow, that video really made our school look amazing, it looks so bright, clean, and beautiful, I'm proud to be a student here. I paused for a moment and said to that student, 'Look around you, your school really is nice.' The point of the story is that the maintenance guys are probably the hardest workers in the school, and the school always looks great because of them." So Tom wanted to make sure that he nominated Chris, and he says, "And his team for doing such an amazing job." We always get so many compliments about how clean and bright and just well-kept Tinley Park High School is, and sometimes people walk in and they're like, "How old is this school?", because they do such a great job keeping it up. So unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, he, like many of us, I'm sure, can relate, is battling a bit of a cold, so I will make sure he gets this honor, and I had to laugh with Yasmeen, and she's like, "Well, we can't nominate the whole team." So although Chris is getting this award to kind of further the recognition of all of our custodians, each of our departments adopted a custodian for the Christmas season, and we will recognize them on Friday before they go home for break, so not only will Chris get something regarding winning the Keepers of the Light, but all of our custodians will be recognized for doing an amazing job at Tinley Park High School. So on behalf of Chris Lopez, our Keeper of the Light. My student is here, and she's absolutely one of my favorites, I didn't nominate her, but there would be a ton of people that would nominate her, so Olivia Clifford, ladies and gentlemen, was nominated by Rebecca Roark, and she says, and it's short and simple, "But I'm nominating Olivia because she truly shines every day. She's respectful and helpful to everyone, including her teachers, always optimistic in all situations. She comes to school every day with a positive attitude and a smile on her face. She's a role model to others academically and personally. Olivia's dedication, as well as her selflessness, makes her a true definition of the Keeper of the Light." And I have to tell you that Olivia is one of those students, when you walk the halls and you just see her, she lights up, I light up, students light up, teachers light up, it's, in the days past COVID, when we weren't looking at each other, we weren't smiling at each other, we weren't talking to each other, Olivia makes such a difference in our school community, because she's like the student that no matter what, whenever you see her, she will put a smile on your face because she always has a smile on her face. You're still at Vinnie's, right? So she works at Vinnie's, Clam Harf, if anybody wants to go visit her over there, and the manager over there also speaks volumes about her work ethic and just having her on staff there as well. So incredibly proud to have Olivia Clifford as our Keeper of the Light.
Hey, everyone, good evening, I am here to present the Keeper of the Light to the two of our wonderful Delta breaks this evening, so first, Paulina Zarboza, if you could come on up, please. Paulina has been with us. Paulina has been with us for the past six years, and she just took on a new role this year, she was in the classroom as a peer professional, and she, I don't know, worked hand-in-hand with me this year as my assistant, and I have to tell you, I was not surprised to see that she was nominated by three different staff members outside of myself for this award, because she has made my life a dream since she stepped into this role. So I'm going to read what your coworkers have said about you, because you'll see that there's a theme. So Paulina took on a new role and has been exceptional at it, she takes the time to make sure all the needs of the school, staff, and students are met. She is caring and makes sure everyone feels part of the community. This year, she helped students create an altar to celebrate the Day of the Dead, it was so special to see the opportunity and to share a part of our culture with the school. Paulina makes everyone's day better and lives easier, she is a glue to our program. Paulina is someone that can always be relied on and is the first to step up and help out in any situation. Paulina's connections with both students and staff are unmatched, she is everyone's go-to person in times of need. Paulina never strays from her positive energy and level-headed demeanor, she is always, excuse me, to keep her life here at Delta, we would be lost without her, from Miss Nealon. And Paulina is the backbone of Delta Academy, her positive attitude and vibes are immaculate, her connections with students are unmatched, if it were not for Paulina and her organization, Delta would not run as smoothly as it does. Whether it's attendance calls, uploads, daily tasks, check-ins, or her genuine connections with all of our students, she does it all with absolute grace and consistency, from Miss Walker. So that is why Paulina is our Keeper of the Light, Miss S. And then Miss Ashley, come on up, please, Ashley Ortiz. She is our student. Hi, this is Ashley Ortiz, and if you have ever stepped over at Delta Academy this school year, I have likely introduced you to Ashley, because Ashley is, she's not crying tears of joy, she is just beaming excitement and energy, she is the most pure and genuine child I've ever had the pleasure of working with. So again, of no surprise to me that you were recognized and nominated by staff members, we said no tears, first and foremost, thank you, we had a rule today. Ashley is just embodies just, she's, like I said, she is pure, she is kind, she brings energy, and just a genuine demeanor to every situation, and we are better for having her with us. Miss Nealon is actually who nominated you on behalf of herself and Mr. Pearson, okay, Miss Nealon? Ashley is a ray of sunshine at Delta and a bright light in everyone's day. Ashley comes into our school with a smile even on her absolute worst days, which I don't think she has bad days, on a side note, I've never seen her have a bad day. Ashley is a unique soul that will go out of her way to introduce herself to a new phase, drop whatever she is doing to ask if there is anything that she can do to help someone else, and she is the first to volunteer for and participate in anything that we have to offer. Ashley is destined for success and greatness in her future, and with her unmatched bubbly personality, her genuine heart, her determination, and her work ethic, she is the true definition of what a Keeper of the Light should be. I'm very proud of you. Congratulations. Miss Nealon, you want to come on up for a quick question? Because she said you look like Miss Nealon all the time.
Good evening, last but not least, the Bremen Braves, I'm excited to recognize both a student and a faculty member tonight, so we are going to start with our student, who might look familiar, because she was just with us November, presenting to you all, because she is an incredible leader in our building, so she was one of our students that presented on behalf of the Food Drive, which was a great success, so Kamaya Johnson, come on up. Kamaya gave a great presentation with her peers on the food drive, but that's just one small piece of what she does at Bremen High School, actively involved in band, peer mediation, student council, National Honor Society, senior leadership, Bible Club, FCCLA, she works, just to name a few things. Kamaya is, I mean, similar to what I've heard about the other students, a ray of sunshine, she's the smiling face in the hallway, she is polite, she's kind, she greets you, if you're in the middle of something, she's the first to say hello, good morning, how are you? Her spirit is just incredible, her energy is phenomenal, she's a great student, a great peer. Speaking of peer, our peer mediation program is newer to Bremen High School, and she was actually nominated by one of our social workers, who took on supervising our peer mediators, and she spoke very highly of Kamaya and her leadership role, and really just the initiative that she took to make sure that our peer mediation program has been a success. So Miss Knoll had to say that Kamaya is not only a great student, she's an amazing person, she's dedicated to her academic work and actively engaged in extracurricular activities. Kamaya is truly a role model student, and she makes me proud to be a Bremen Brave. So, on behalf of Bremen High School, Miss Knoll? And then our faculty member, I'm actually have two people join me, Mr. Mike Klein and one of our alumni, Jacob Conway, is going to come up, because we've got a little interesting story here. Anybody listening to ninety-three point nine, especially this time of year, we've got Christmas music, there's lots of festive things going on. Well, you may have heard a little something called the Teacher Salute, Mr. Klein was recognized recently on the Teacher Salute, and I think all of Bremen High School was excited, we tuned in, we shared the link in the video clip, or the audio clip, and interestingly enough, wondering where the nomination came from, and it was one of our alumni, Jacob Conway, so I'm going to turn it over to him to speak a little bit on Mr. Klein.
All right, thank you, Mr. Podolski, good evening, everybody, just a quick note on Mr. Klein here, Mike Klein is the perfect candidate for the Teacher Salute, he goes above and beyond inside and outside the classroom for his students. He coaches football, basketball, and baseball, that's right, three seasons all year long. He coaches football, basketball, and baseball. That's right, three seasons all year long. He stays late and will come in early just to help a student. He will make sure to provide them with what they need to be successful, not only in school, but also outside school. He's a mentor to many, has personally helped me to become the man I am today. I am honored to nominate Mr. Klein for the Teacher Salute.
So not only did Jacob nominate Mr. Klein for the Teacher Salute, Mr. Klein actually was chosen to win a trip to Miami out of all of the nominations. So thanks to Jacob, thanks to Klein as an alumni to go back and recognize someone that made an impact on his life, how many years ago?
Twenty-fourteen, twenty-eighteen. So I just walked into Bremen ten years ago, so.
And I think it's incredible. Mr. Klein's an alumni. We have a lot of alumni in the mix here, too. So just to see the really special things that come from Bremen High School, growing up and looking at people that impact our lives and shape our futures, I think it's really incredible. So congratulations to, uh, Mr. Klein, Keeper of the Light. Congratulations to all the recipients of the Keeper of the Light. I am proud to serve and support you and see all your stories. You make it really easy to brag about this, twenty-two, twenty-eight. So thank you very much for all your hard work. All right, moving on to three point three, our FOIA request.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Since the last regular board meeting, received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. Matt Stockwell, the data branch, requested all purchasing records from January twenty-twenty to present day, including purchase order number or equivalent, purchase date, vendor ID or equivalent, vendor name, line item details, line item quantity, line item unit price, and line item total price. This request is being completed. And Mary Jen, uh, Mary Jenice, Workflow Solutions Software, requested current multifunction copiers, production copiers, printer, lease purchase contracts, in terms of conditions, printer maintenance contracts, in terms of conditions, and lease service invoices relating to items of all for the past six months. This request is being completed. Thank you.
Six pages, six pages, there you go. Thank you.
Any other, any board member reports?
Um, was able to attend the Delta Academy, given the Monk, uh, Board Luncheon. Um, the young lady who just received the Keeper of the Light was one of the recipients. It was a, it was a great, um, couple of hours. These kids are really, um, inspiring, and the camaraderie between the teachers and the students is palpable. It's really amazing.
All right, if there are no other board member reports, moving on to new business. Dr. Morris.
Item four point one is the December bills, addendum to bills, year old and CDS bills. Item is being recommended for full board approval.
Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point two is the twenty-twenty-four tax levy and the associated resolutions. Item is being recommended for full board approval.
No move. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Lot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item four point three, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Four point three is the rental MOU between District two twenty-eight and South Suburban College, as presented at committee of hope. Superintendent is recommending the approval of this rental MOU for full board approval.
Second, moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. And four point four?
Four point four is the revised twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school calendar, as presented at committee of hope. Superintendent is recommending this revised school calendar for full board approval.
No move. Second, moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item four point five, Dr. Boswell.
Orders discussed at the committee meeting last week, I along with the superintendent are recommending the board vote to approve the application for the ISBE School Maintenance Project Grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to support our electronic smart lock project.
So moved.
Second, moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item four point six?
Uh, board, last week we discussed the purchase of six hundred laptops to refresh the computers that our entire staff use on a daily basis. The total purchase amount is six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to purchase six hundred Lenovo X thirteen laptops via the vendor CDW. This purchase is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second, moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye. Item five point one, uh, personnel recommendations. Dr. Goggins.
Okay, Ms. Ressler, under leads, uh, Gail Richter and Michael Young, under retirement, Connie McSweeney, under change in position, Darcy Walker. Under resignations, Dave Jada Burks, and under employment, Stephanie Ramirez, Megan Jankowski, Herb Offerd, and Tamar Clark. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved. Second, moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Moving on to communications. Do we have any public comments? All right, if there are no public comments, then we are going to go to closed session. Can I get a motion to go to closed session to consider information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one-twenty, subsection TC one?
So moved.
Second, moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Motley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Um, Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.